Good morning, welcome to the July 24th meeting of the Hatfield Board of Selectmen. We're here at Memorial Town Hall. This morning, we're going to be going over the center school, some options that we've discovered we can maybe work on. We're also going to talk about the town hall ramp and also the town hall renovations and ambulance uncollectible accounts. And then we'll hear from DPW, Town Administrator, so let's get on with it. First thing, is there any public announcements? Is anybody having anything? All right, community forum? Nobody's here for community forum? Okay, next, let's get into the minutes.
Motion approved, Board of Selectmen minutes of 3 July.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve Board of Selectmen minutes of 10 July.
Second.
Motion made, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, next up is posted business, the center school. John, would you like to come up or?
No, I'm sorry, I sit here.
Can't hear you, so if you can sit up here on the end or break the...
Just introduced myself, I'm John Wokes, representing in full capacity today the Housing Authority. We've asked the Selectmen to schedule a meeting to discuss center school after the options that have fallen through on the center school went awry. So, we had met informally amongst, you know, different people, asked us to come forward with possible use for the center school as housing. So, we came here today to try to see if the Selectmen would entertain an idea to go through for a potential housing project at the center school. Also, I'm kind of representing the Community Preservation, Bob Wagner is out of town on vacation and he had, and I had some discussions on potential uses of community preservation funds over at the center school if some project would come about. But what we'd like to, you know, what I'd like to ask is, I'd like to ask the Selectmen to start a formal public process within the town of Hatfield to explore the possibilities of reuse and rehabilitation of the center school for the purpose of multi-use housing and limited municipal purposes, council on aging, recreation and public facilities. I did put together a little paper this morning which is available. I just passed it out to the Selectmen and, you know, members of here present. Mike McGraw from the Chairman of the Housing Authority is here today. He's also a member of the Community Preservation Commission as a representative from the Housing Authority. What we, we had a meeting last night, last week in the Housing Authority and we had informal discussion that we'd be interested in entering into a program with the town to see if we could get some housing in, into the community. You know, we like to, you know, take the next step to decide, you know, the ultimate fate of the center school which has not achieved prior efforts for use as public resources. We've tried privatization, leasing, municipal offices, we're going to go in there, and lastly, the last endeavor was the charter school. I guess, well, you know, just kind of a general feeling in myself is to characterize this next step as the last guest effort to save the existing center school which is rapidly deteriorating and is not providing a current beneficial use to the town. The town has reiterated through, you know, various votes, the intention to, of the main street property to be retained in the control of the town of Hatfield. And what we were proposing is maybe a partnership with the town of Hatfield and the Housing Authority which is a quasi-state municipal organization to expand housing services by exploring other housing opportunities to the community. For years, all we've gotten in community here through the Housing Authority has been the 44 units of elderly housing. There's a myriad of other programs available out there that Hatfield, for one reason or another, has not applied for and hasn't initiated. Mostly, what I've heard is, well, there's no money available for us, or there's, what are we going to get out of it type of deal. So, maybe this is a time we could start, you know, leaning in that direction. But what I'm proposing is to create a joint effort and to take the first step needed for involvement and success by joining the forces of local state and federal agencies, namely the town and its various departments, the Board of Selectmen, Administrative Assistant, Public Works, Council on Aging, the Recreation Department, Redevelopment Authority, EIDC and the CDA. The Housing Authority along with the state, including DHCD, Department of Veterans Administration, possibly the Office of Development Disabilities Handicapped Office, and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, and our representing elected officials to take a look at this for a housing endeavor. We also would be involved with, on the federal level, we could ask HUD, Veterans Affairs, HHS and US Department of Agriculture which has programs out there for rural housing which might be a funding source for such an endeavor. The engagement of private entities, and I know you've explored that in the past with the possible leasing of the properties, they're soliciting for proposals for housing units or condominium units, you know, to be provided by the outside, you know, contractors or outside owners. And, you know, and if we have to use nonprofits or private entities going down the road, I think it's, it might be a worthwhile endeavor. To address the next step, want to determine the direction that this envisioned projects should go in. If so desired, install a commitment initially by the local parties involved which would be the town, the Housing Authority. Ensure the willingness of cooperation right up front, no bickering between the departments of who's on first and who's on second, who's going to take the lead. And start exploring the feasibility of putting multi-use housing in limited municipal departments into the center school. The Housing Authority at its July 17th meeting in support of today's meeting indicated an intention and willingness of expanding other housing opportunities within the town at center school and would be interested in managing and administering all related units and programs placed in the center school. Okay. I guess that's probably, you know, the spiel I have so far and I guess if, I don't want to go any further if this is something that you're not interested in, you know, there's other things I put together we could talk about, you know, getting a feasibility study or should we go ahead with, you know, utilizing other reports that you've already created? I haven't seen all the reports on center schools. Some of you have been involved, you know, with center school from day one. I haven't and I know the Housing Authority doesn't know what's gone on for, you know, the day-to-day things since inception. So, I guess I'd like to stop there for now and just leave it up, leave it up to some kind of preliminary decision if it's something the town would be interested in.
Well, first of all, I for one am very interested in it. I have been interested in it in a number of years. I think we should be moving forward. I don't know how my other two board members feel, but I think we should move forward and possibly come up with a committee. I don't know if...
Well, I think John's hit some of the key points accurately. One, the town does have no interest in relinquishing ownership of the fields, making them available to the school and to the public. It's not expressed any interest in selling the parcel itself or the building and/or the fields. It's, for a variety of reasons, center of town, key part of the community. I think, you know, you mentioned some of the other trial balloons that we've tried to work. There's very limited opportunity out there for leasing. We've seen that in terms of the response that we just had, for example. People need to put major investment in that facility to make it work and if they're going to do that, they want to own it. I think though, the key thing that's been a barrier, and I'm not sure that's maybe not exactly the right word, has been a reluctance of the town to come up with the money to make the investment needed in that place. So, critical to going forward is securing out some outside help with the funding. The second thing, I agree with Mr. Damski, like housing would be exceptionally valid use of the property. It fits with what's already in the area, low traffic, a whole variety of other things. Doesn't impact the schools. But one thing there is, we need very diligently to work on definition of the requirement so we could have a package to go forward that will help us secure that external funding which I think is absolutely vital. But I think if you're looking for an endorsement from the board in terms of direction, use of, as housing, I think at least there's two of us that are strongly supportive.
And I also agree that we should move forward on that, John, and one of the things that came to mind when you were talking about funding and stuff, DHCD, Department of Housing and Community Development, I just got a notice from them, they're, I think they have a grant application that's, that you can submit by August, mid-August for development and something like what the Housing, I mean, Redevelopment Authority did. You can get up to approximately $50,000 to look at feasibility studies and stuff like that. So, that's something that you might want to take advantage of right away.
All right, so there is an interest, you know, this is the next idea on the table, I believe, probably since we've had those other scofflaws or whatever you want to say, trying to, you know, fill an empty building. I guess is, there's other issues that we have, you know, we should consider by going forward, see how it will, look at our master plans, see if it's going to, you know, any change in housing over there would affect the master planning. Also, some of the other issues that may come, is it zoning requirements, if it was educational facilities, is there, we have to go over any zoning hearings or clear hurdles?
I don't, I don't, don't quote me on this, but I think we're all set with that because back when we were trying to sell it for apartments, we went through that.
Any other covenants on it, say when it was built, has to remain education?
Not, no, because again, we went through the whole thing with the town attorney and...
One of the things that you're going to find, John, in the feasibility study, especially if you, if you get it through DHCD, there'll be an in-depth study of all that, okay? If there's going to be any traffic, if there's going to be any zoning issues, any bylaw issues, it'll state all of that. And a company, when you put it out for bid, the company that is awarded it will come back with a full extensive report on that.
In a sense, Eddie, you brought up DHCD. There's usually, there's two major divisions, you know, there's the housing division, there's the economic development division. I don't know who, which one is soliciting, you know, the...
DHCD, which is the Department of Housing, Community Development. That's the one that...
Well, which division of it? There's two divisions.
Oh, and I'm sure, I have to look at my paper.
Whether it's economic development or the housing, you know? That would probably give us an indication of, when we're applying for a grant, which way, if it was on housing related, you know, right from the housing division and they have the funding agency that you'd go through probably the Housing Authority. But if it's through economic development and you'd go the other way through the town, you know? So, we'd have to, you know, look at, see what the letter is.
Mm-hmm, okay.
So, you could share that, you know, send it to, you know, Mike?
I'll get that.
Over at, you know, the Housing Authority so we'll have it ready for our next meeting so we can further discuss it. And I guess, what else I... I just, also, you know, we have, we have this Redevelopment Authority in Hatfield too, you know? It's kind of been focusing on industrial development, business development, but also this is another part of redevelopment. You're revitalizing your downtown. Maybe there's a way, you know, to work with, you know, the Redevelopment Authority and the economic development to do something along that line, you know? They have to be, you know, a part in to this too. They're another part of the town and also what I call the quasi-authority type, you know, issues here that we have to deal with. You know, it's got to be a partnership. It's got to be a partnership with all the, and that hasn't been tried in the past, I don't think. Right now, it's been, you know, the Board of Selectmen, you've had a couple of study committees trying to do, we're bringing in the Housing Authority, you know, but there's other people out there, these other state agencies we could bring in and try to go along with it. And their chances of getting multi-funded is far greater if all the parties are involved and on the same page.
Actually, we approached the Redevelopment Authority at one point to take on the project as a project lead. At the time, they declined and at the time, they were however involved with the industrial park activity and they felt they didn't have the resources and or time to pursue additional, additional work.
Right, but if, you know, if they can be approached and say, let's revisit as a partnership with it, you know, and whether it's going to be a committee like Jan's, you know, submit it, you know, suggest it, then we should think about it, you know? It's no benefit to the town to keep that, you know, that building empty, you know, any longer than it has to be. And this is something, I was talking to Michael earlier, Michael McGraw, this is not going to get done overnight, you know? If people think it's an instant solution to this, we still may be a year or two down the road before we have concrete plans to, you know, go forward and revitalize that building. So, you know, we're also thinking of maintaining that building for another year, year and a half or two years, as is, unless some other, you know, magic plan comes up for it, so. Also, I was just curious, I haven't looked in detail, UMass did a survey, remember the green survey they did?
Yes.
And also downtown? How this, this housing now would fit in with the UMass survey, you know, this whole project? And that should be a consideration if that's something, if there's great features in there where we could tie it in, it'd be great. And also, if it is developed, you know, and I know talking to Bob Wagner, we were, it's an opportunity to also get into the back of the portion of the property. There's, there's a huge open space there which right now is being, you know, limited to athletic use, maybe a park, you develop that, and there's more money right now available for that type of thing. In fact, Community Preservation Law just changed to make it more lenient to develop some of those downtown parks and recreational fees that weren't available in the past. So, that could be a consideration, you know? It, just, you think about if you can get this project, you've got a centerpiece, then you could start expanding those empty lots and spots you've got around town, you know? I know you're going through with different projects here, you know, the fire station, you know, you took down the milk, I was sitting here about 40 years ago and we were talking about rehabbing the milkman school for offices. That's gone. We put it, we put, I saw them build a fire station, we put the doors out the back way because we wanted to retain the milkman school for forever and ever and that became obsolete. So, this is something, you know, do we want to, do we want to use that building or should it be something that's going to be too expensive that now, let's just tear it down and open it up and open it up for something else?
John, you commented about the lot out back or the open field out back. I thought that was designated for the field hockey at Smithville, I mean, at Smith Academy. What's going on with that? You know something that I don't know?
I think you really need to parse this into two parts. One, get a general concept as to, do we want to retain the backend as recreation? And just understand that as a backdrop to the main focus which should be on the facility itself and the housing initiative you're talking about.
Well, you know how much of an issue it was, you know, when we were trying to rent it out, the school had to have so much space there for field hockey and now, all of a sudden, it sounds like it's for something different and what's going on?
No, 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 he's not said that. He's not said that at all.
No, these are suggestions.
What I'm saying, you can expand upon that, you know, the facilities on there, you know, there was mentioned that, you know, bringing in the Recreation Department into this building, you know, public facilities, you know, you open up the, you know, the bottom floor for your council on aging, you've got, you know, your parking, streamline your parking, give more office space for counseling. Also, recreation doesn't, that's an expanding field too. One of the big issues that parents have expressed in the past, well, we bring people to the, we've got no place to bring anybody to the bathroom, we'd have no place, you know, to conduct. If it rains, where do we, everybody heads to the car and heads out. You know, why can't we have like a recreation area? We drag everybody in here from, I don't want to say dragging everybody in here, people come in here for, you know, exercise class.
Right.
We could have a facilities room over there for exercise class or, you know, arts and crafts or something that Recreation Department does, you know, there's space available, make space available as the municipal portion of it. And the upper floors would be for housing. So, it's just a thought with, you know, throwing out there. And I just thought, I just got with various conversations with, you know, some of the locals and thought maybe there's something, you know, we could be interested in, you know? And there is funding out there. I put together a list of funding just by going through some of the, you know, other projects that were done in other communities and it isn't like we're reinventing the wheel. There's, schools have been rehabbed in other communities for housing and multiple use, for instance, like Bedford, Ware had one, Rehoboth, Holliston had it. It's taken schools bigger and smaller than our, this one over here, and it rehabbed it with some creative financing. Newton, Attleboro, Bridgewater, Danvers, Acton. Danvers had three schools, all schools, the elementary school, the middle school and the high school, they turned into housing and various other, you know, municipal functions. So, these buildings can be saved.
Certainly can.
But are they worth being saved? That's, the final decision's going to have to come soon, I think.
You say you certainly can check with these other towns and get the information that, what they applied for and use them, their applications and stuff for a model. That always works because you know it was accepted and where the money at and stuff like that and help you guys move, you know, move forward on it.
And, you know, looking at the various programs that DHCD is, you know, offering and some of the other agencies, it's going to have to be low income assistance. Those are, those are the programs that are being funded the most right now and, but we're envisioning something, one of the greatest needs we see, you know, in housing is, you know, elderly couples. We don't have large units over in our Housing Authority for elderly couples, especially an elderly couple, say they wanted a handicapped child, they're taking care of their child or an elderly couple taking care of a parent and they're, they need of assistance, you know, they're low income, probably real low income. And you're seeing that's more and more common today. And also, we have a policy over at the Housing Authority, we, one of the criteria for getting in first, after you meet all the eligibility requirements for income is local preference. We like to see when somebody makes an application, they have a connection to Hatfield. We feel that builds community when you make an application and we, you know, everybody says, well, we worried about outsiders. Well, yeah, you worry about outsiders. They'll come in when you have vacancies and you've exhausted your waiting list for your local people. The people who grew up here, who have a connection, have worked here, have a child here, some kind of local connection where they can go into the units on the, you know, the Housing Authority. We would apply the same criteria for those units we develop over there, whether, you know, it is elderly, elderly parents, how about a single parent with transitional, a single parent with one child, a two-bedroom unit, a transitional unit, temporary, somebody connected with the community would need a unit like that, say six-month or eight-month basis, we'd limit it. Depends, there's five or six different programs you could throw in there and I'd rather see, my preference, I'd rather see multi-use in just saying, it's all elderly, it's all family or all veterans. If you have a little, little bit of each, I think that is community. You don't, you see that everywhere, your next-door neighbor isn't, maybe he's a veteran or he's, you know, he's, or she is a school teacher. You want to bring a variety of people and I don't want to use diversity, but I guess you have to use diversity in the housing sector, so.
You want to be careful mixing elderly with kids and children and stuff like that. That's why, you know, we have complexes like that because children sometimes doesn't work.
Yes and no. You know, we propose something like a transitional program where somebody would come in for a temporary basis, you know, we maintain the units on a temporary basis where they come in till they found traditional, you know, assisted housing or get on the waiting list somewhere else. You know, people become, you know, homeless and say a homeless family, says someone's burnt out, say we have a unit set aside for something like that, just for a temporary basis to get them back on their feet. You know, it, and sometimes it's not bad to have elderly with kids.
All right. Well, let's move on and I guess my suggestion would be, do we want to start a committee? Do we want to...
I would move that the Housing Authority along with town administrator for the moment representing the Board of Selectmen draft a charter for a working group to explore the development of center school. And in that charter define who the participants would be, what their roles and responsibilities would be, what the deliverables would be, and somewhere in there outline the concept that we've been talking about, about primarily housing with potentially other occupants in the lower portion of the building, recreation, COA, those kinds of things. And retaining the recreational aspect of the fields and, and then come forward with kind of the way ahead, so who needs to be doing what to take this and run with it.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. John, all I can say is, we all wish you luck, we appreciate what you're doing.
I just, you know, regarding to that, and we've had discussion the other night and Mike, Mike's had broken down some of the issue, the leadership or whatever you want, or membership of the Housing Authority. Stanley Semensky and I would handle the center school, you know, we'll make it formal, you know, the next meeting, but also Mike's involved with other issues in community preservation. We have other, other potential housing thing going on that Mike, Mike himself is involved with Bob Wagner. So, we already started discussing this, but we needed some kind of formal consent to, not to waste our effort and breadth and effort on doing this any further. So, we'll contact Paul, I guess, and we'll have some kind of preliminary discussion on it and, you know, be back, you know, when, while it's summertime, could you give us a couple of months? Maybe, you know, put together something, you know, how we think we should go through with it.
Oh, if you want.
Your call.
First, September, some?
September, June.
Sound good? Middle of September, how's that?
If you have some kind of preliminary thing, you know, give us a little, you know, it is getting to people together, you know, people are even, who want to come today, they're on vacation with their families and it's a tough time, July.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
You know, especially to start something brand new.
And if, if you know anybody that wants to be on a committee, they can forward their...
Well, we encourage anybody from the community to contact Paul and, you know, or Mike Landrick over at the Housing Authority, say we'd like to be on that committee. You know, and then, you know, again, we, there's no guarantees, we'll do something, we'll come up with some ideas for either for the feasibility study, look at some of the materials that we're, you know, presented in the past and try to pull this together.
Every project starts somewhere and this is a great idea.
John, I'll submit, I'll get those papers to Paul, okay? And he'll get them.
Okay.
Take that, get them again.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Phil, why don't you, you have, you've got the information as to what has been going on, just, just to let people know that we did... on, just, just to let people know that we did send out bids for the handicap ramp out front of Town Hall, and I believe we had something like a hundred thousand dollars voted on the 2012 budget, and it came in at about double, or almost double, so, we're going back to the drawing board for the most part, so I'll let Phil.
The bids range from 180 to 270, we asked for the CPA funding of 100, so, that's what was in play, so, obviously we're off, I did talk to the architect about trying to break the project out a little bit, and for the plaza, it's only like 16,000, and to relocate the utilities, he said, you know, it's probably the cost of the difference to relocate utilities underneath the slab because you'd have to put them way outside because you still have to pour foundation where that wall curves, so, my suggestion was go back to town meeting and do the whole project as developed, as designed, we currently have the design for, or, it's up to you, I guess, I mean, I don't know where you want to go.
Well, one thing that I mentioned to Phil is that we have that article in there to relocate and bring off the street, new power to this building, and there's no reason we can't use that to divert the telephone lines and the cable lines and push them over there along with it and get it outside the ramp area and come in through the boiler room like was planned, so the, the money is there, that's, I think, a hundred thousand dollars, somewhere in that range.
I think we just, I think, we just spent 1,700, is it, over here at the school?
Seventeen hundred, correct.
Okay, that's just to put the cable in.
I know, I know.
All right, so, we're gonna be looking at a cost here, the power company isn't gonna do that for nothing.
What I'm saying is, we, we have an article for a hundred thousand dollars to relocate the, the.
Not relocate, that was just for the.
Relo, okay, and bring the power into this building from the street to here and put new panel boxes in.
That was just for the panel boxes, I, was under the.
That's a whole new line coming in from the street, that's what we looked at.
Now, are we gonna have permission from the Smith Academy?
I don't know what hap.
Because you are gonna be cutting through their, their property.
If that, if that were to come through, that's all they have to do is leave holes in the concrete where the pipes can go straight through, okay, there's nothing, there's no rocket scientist that's needed to, to put a couple of holes in the concrete to make the pipes go through.
I personally don't see why we can't just leave it where it is and just put pipe in right there, I've seen that done a hundred times, I've done it, okay, that was part of my job, okay, so when somebody tells me, let's go around the building to save some money, when I think, if you talk to the electric company, they can set it up, they'll send somebody down here and say, yeah, we can put in cable, I mean conduit, you use Schedule 80 conduit, you bury it in concrete, nobody's gonna damage it.
Right.
Done, instead of fooling around with ripping through a park now and everything else, I, I would let Phil get a hold of.
The only other thing is, I think that the town administrator, Paul, had a discussion with the electric inspector, if I'm correct, so, I'm sure he can shed a little light on that.
Yeah, he informed me that the, the electrical wire could not be housed in the boiler room because there's too much.
That's what I was telling Phil, I didn't, I didn't believe it.
It's a code violation.
Right, absolutely, so it's gotta stay where, basically where it is.
Basically, as far as I can see.
What do you mean, it has to stay?
Well, you can't put it in the boiler room.
There's too, there's too much heat in that room.
There's too much heat, and if there's a fire, how you gonna get into the panel? Basically, it's, it's, it's against the law, it's a code violation, unless you, unless we can figure out how, again, it's gonna cost us money, to put a wall in that's fireproof, it isn't gonna happen. Ask Buster Semensky, he's, he's the town inspector, we can't, it's basically gonna stay where it is, or put it out back, which wouldn't make any sense, because now you're gonna be rewiring a whole building.
Let's take a look at it.
Okay.
Because that one boiler, the big boiler, doesn't, it's not even you.
It doesn't matter, if there's a, a little boiler, it cannot be in the same room as a boiler, period.
And what I'm saying is, the boiler room is big enough that we might be able to petition that off and keep the electrical in the, in a separate room. We'll take a look at it, okay, Phil?
Well, but, let's back up, I support the design as submitted by Kayoleo and Bienniak, and not, so we're not gonna try and redesign the, the ramp and plaza, right?
Ramp is gonna stay where it is, absolutely.
Okay, ramp and plaza remain as is.
What, what the cost was is to go around all the pipes and stuff like that if they were building the, they were building the ramp, so if you could eliminate that part, okay, then you don't have that problem, that's all we're saying.
So, the question that Phil is going to explore is, one, your option and Jan's option of continuing as is with some discussion with the electric company, is that?
Yes.
Otherwise, it's not gonna happen, it's a hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Well.
Well, the thing is, I don't think we're gonna bring it down that much anyway, I mean, eighty thousand dollars, there's no way, there's just not, there's gotta be, there's gotta be another cost in there.
Yeah.
I can't believe it's gonna cost eighty thousand dollars to relocate like a, a bank of conduit, there's no way.
I just think that's.
If it is, I'll get into the business.
I mean, the other, the other option that we have is for us to put it out for bid, we've got the design of the ramp, and we put it out as, as the general contractor.
We have the design, we could put it out to bid tomorrow if you wanted to.
Yeah.
And eliminate all the other costs associated with administrative, because Kaylo was going to be the project manager.
He was getting a good chunk of money.
Wait, 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 given the, do we trigger a requirement for a project manager, given it's a public building and the threshold of whatever the dollar value was in the contract?
No, no, there's no trigger, but.
Well, when you build a school, there's a trigger.
Well, yeah, well, it's, it's common, you know, it's common sense, you wanna have a, you wanna have a clerk of the works for a big project like that, for this, it, it certainly doesn't trigger anything.
Okay.
It, it would be prudent.
Just get the ramp in without all that extra overhead and stuff like that, I think that's where a lot of the money is, is, is.
Well, you can tell you, you got the bid breakout, don't you, I mean, the cost breakout.
Yeah.
You know how much the.
We'll take a look at it again and figure out what we can do.
I wasn't here for the bid opening, we could surely share that, and Paul and I can go through them and see what the administrative costs were in that.
I can't believe they'd be eighty thousand dollars either.
All right.
I, I just have a question, how can we estimate it so far off? I mean, I can understand a couple thousand dollars in there, but between eighty to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars, how can we assess our cost?
I don't know, well, for one, I wasn't on the board back then, but, but again, I, I think what it, I think what part of the problem is, is when a lot of this stuff was bid out, I mean, this is only me speaking, because I wasn't here, but I think a lot of this was like the, actually, that hundred thousand dollars was also supposed to take care of two handicap bathrooms at the same time, but I think what happened was, we, they were, we were planning to have the whole building renovated, in that case, that's where you rip open the whole, I mean, there's, there's nothing left to it, it's basically gutted, and it's a lot cheaper to go in and start putting plumbing in with petitions totally ripped out, or they can get through the walls, where now you're, you're kinda make, doing makeshift work, so, that brings up the price a little bit.
And I understand, I guess, when, when, to complete my curiosity, all the other projects that are going on, are you aware of the exact same project, problem with the other projects in the larger town that are going on to continue?
I hope not.
Because that can be, you're running a million, a million dollars.
I hope not.
Triple on project cost every single term.
Well, quite frankly, the build-out of the money, given the money we got at town meeting for this first floor, and we're gonna talk about that today, is gonna be constrained by the dollars available, but what our aim is to, given the two-floor plan was not supported, to lay out, come to some agreement as to what the first, one-floor plan build-out might look like, what the priorities are for that one plan build-out, and then constrain what we could do this next, this come, or during this fiscal year, given the dollars we have, and, which, which means it won't be the whole project, it'll be partial.
At the town meeting, you can be voting on a certain amount of money, not the project, right?
Right.
If it's a hundred thousand dollars.
That's all you get.
You're, you're gonna buy that, you'll get, you'll get your elevator for a hundred thousand dollars.
But, but we did go out and get pricing on all of that before we just came up with, we, I mean, we didn't, we didn't just come up with a figure on any of that, okay, same thing with the building outback, we went through an engineer or an architect, from there it went to a cost estimator, the cost estimator sat down and came back with his figures, we didn't just come up with the figures, so. Any other questions?
All right, Phil, you'll come back next meeting, we gotta close on this, we'll never get a ramp done.
Yes.
Okay.
All right, next, Town Hall renovation, see what we're reading on it.
I think I'll turn it over to Paul, he's been taking the lead with, well, we had a kickoff meeting with some of the staff that's involved on this floor, and then he surely can share what he's received from them.
Yeah, I've started discussing the project with staff and getting their input, there's some good ideas out there, and Phil and I will start putting together, you know, a conceptual plan, you know, soon, you know, probably within the next week or so, and we're just, we're just looking at the first floor, and I do want to point out that the article that was voted on at the town meeting regarding this says, to see if the town will vote to appropriate 200,000 dollars for renovations on Memorial Town Hall, including design and electrical upgrades required for an elevator, design and renovation of existing offices, design and constructing of new offices and/or meeting spaces, enter fund set appropriation through borrowing, et cetera, et cetera. Phil has informed me that he's been told that the electrical upgrades to power the elevator, that's gonna cost somewhere in the neighborhood of 60,000 dollars, so what, what we have to work with in the renovations on this floor is a hu, is about 140,000 dollars, which isn't a lot of money, but, but I think that the, the going forward here, we'll do what we can with 140,000 dollars.
Right.
Again, the, the objective right now ought to be to lay out at least something to hand to the designer, what are the overall end state we're looking for is, and then build out what we can to satisfy immediate needs like a separate office for.
Yeah, we've got, you know, we've got a couple of.
A town clerk.
We've got a couple of existing offices that are completely inadequate as working spaces, the other twist is that with the treasurer clerk retiring, it, it, it looks like that position will be split into two, so we're gonna need to find space for the treasurer and a, and a, a separate treasurer and a clerk, so, we're taking all those things into account.
Well, just for the board, what offices do we think ought to be on this floor? One question, what are the adjacency requirements, what are the space requirements, are we gonna end up with a stage in or the stage out, I assume we're gonna put a bathroom on this floor or not, are we gonna have an open room for the meeting room, or, given severe cost constraints now and projected in the future, or is it cheaper to put in a, a lower, lower ceiling for energy, sound, and a hundred other reasons? I mean, we, I don't know how you plan to, you and Phil plan to work this, but there may be some top-down guidance that we ought to be giving before you waste a lot of time.
Well, we'll, we'll probably have a conceptual plan for you by the next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, the first thing we're looking at is what the needs are within the people on this floor right now, what their space needs are, and see if it can fit, because you have a certain floor print and that's it, so, the footprint's the footprint, we're not changing that, so.
Right.
It's just a matter of, can we fit what all our needs are?
I mean, you're not gonna have a Taj Mahal, you're gonna have a room.
Never, yeah.
That's all you're gonna have, okay?
Right, right.
Simple as that, because you only have so much space in this town hall.
Yeah.
Okay, and, and you don't have, you're limited money, so, a room is a room, and, and you may do with what you got until we can afford it at some point.
Yeah, yeah, one of the main things I'm looking at is, since we're gonna have to move offices around, okay, what's the best working relationship, you know, between the offices, we wanna have, you know, all the financial people, you know, basically clustered together, that sort of thing.
Sure. All right, okay. All right, next is the ambulance abatements.
I'm assuming it's just June, motion to approve the June ambulance abatement of 3,118 dollars and 30 cents.
I second that.
Okay, motion's been made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Could we get a report on your?
I was just gonna say.
Session with Coastal?
Paul and I met with Coastal, and as far as this summary, and when we do the adjustments, the adjustments that we do, 90% of the adjustments that we're doing here are related to insurance reductions, okay, like, we charge 300, 850 dollars, we only get 300 dollars.
Medicare only pays X.
That's what this shows, but there are some in this column also that shows people that haven't paid, okay, people that just outright haven't paid anything, they've received the check from the insurance company, they haven't sent Hatfield any money, so when we talked to Coastal, they were, they would like us to act upon a letter, give them a letter, giving them the authority to go into the next step of collections, okay, which I really feel that we should have some say on, there's about 11% of the bills that are not paid, that are not insurance-related, so 11%, some of them, they're gonna have, you know, people that just can't pay, but other ones, they, they, they can pay, then we're gonna have to deal with it and, and maybe give them a letter to go out and pursue it with a collection agency.
What's the cost?
Okay, Ralph's gonna say, what is the cost?
I believe she said it was incorporated in.
Or does this still come out of what they?
It's whatever they make.
Get?
Yeah, whatever they get, that's the way I took it, Paul, is that the way you took it?
That's my understanding, yes.
Yeah, it was part of it, that's all they needed was a letter, because the previous board of selectmen said, oh, we don't want to chase after any of those bills, okay, so, I'm not sure, and correct me if I'm wrong, what they would like is, they would like permission to go after that, that money.
This would be only for the people that.
11%.
Received, received checks from their insurance company, but.
Yeah, and then the ones that didn't, let's say if they didn't have insurance, they'd be obligated to pay the bill, okay, unless they had a hardship, which they can, they can apply for hardship, but we have no criteria for hardship, okay, right now, they send a letter in saying we got hardship, but there's no documentation, whereas in the assessor's office, there's criteria, if you have a hardship, you have to come underneath the certain guidelines to get this hardship, and I think, you know, we need to look at that, to come up with a hardship description of what really constitutes a hardship, and what documentation they're gonna have to give us, and then we can release them from it, you know, if it is truly a hardship. Did I miss anything, Paul?
No, that covers it.
With the proviso that in fact, it's not costing us money, I'd certainly support giving them authority to pursue further, if it's gonna cost us directly, then I would think we ought to revisit it.
We can.
There is supposed to be, I understand, legislation in the, in Massachusetts pending, and I don't know, I honestly don't know the status, to change that so that ambulance folks do get, in fact, get reimbursed as opposed to the check going to the individual, in fact.
Right.
Part of that gets diverted upfront to. In fact, part of that gets diverted upfront to pay the, pay the ambulance. And that's deducted from what the individual gets, because a lot of folks are just taking a check and running with it and stiffing the ambulance.
And Coastal gets 5% of what they collect, okay? They don't get anything more than what they collect.
I understand that. I just didn't understand about this additional step.
Yeah.
'Cause it's curious that we didn't authorize them to do it years ago if it didn't cost us anything.
No. And that's, we can double-check with them to make sure there isn't, and if there is, we'll bring it back to the board and let them know. If, if they maybe have to go into an exceptional amount, they might charge 7% from that collection, okay? Where it's not gonna cost us anything other than-
But it's still more than we would've gotten to be in with.
Yeah, so, but we'll check on that.
Yeah, I'll give them a call.
But it was a worthwhile meeting. It was a good meeting and got a lot out of it.
Just a couple other loose ends then. Where are these hardship letters going? Greg says he doesn't get them. Marie says she doesn't get them. Who, I, when I was reading, when I was reading this report, it talks about sending hardship letters to the chief, and I was wondering, well, are they sending it to Bill Beldon? No, not Bill.
The last email I got was that Marie, the tax collector, got the, the report. Right now, it's gonna be sent to Paul.
Okay. I specifically asked Marie. She denied ever receiving hardship.
Okay. But anyway, we have that straightened out. It goes to Paul.
It goes to me.
Okay. And then the last part is, how is this hardship criteria going to be developed?
We can take a look at how the assessors classify their hardship cases. You have to bring in your proof of how much money you have in your savings account, how much money you get in, coming into your account, how much property you own and all that. There's certain criteria.
Use, use the same criteria.
Probably a list of probably 10 questions.
Okay, so you're gonna work with Greg, Greg, then, on, okay.
Okay. And Ed.
All right. Okay, DPW director.
Thank you.
Just a couple things.
I'm a little lazy on tables.
The tree planting program that was passed with CPA money. We planted 30 trees last week in town to redevelop the canopy. There is still some funds available for more planting. So again, I'm asking the residents, if you want a tree planted in historic districts, please come forward and make up the paperwork that's available at town hall. Like I said, there's a little bit more money left to plant. So far, we planted over 60 trees in town. And I think it was a great program due to the storm damages. I wanna thank the CPA for funding that portion of it. And, you know, thank the DPW workers for, you know, assisting in the planting. I think it's working out very well, and the residents are watering the trees and taking care of them, so that's even better. So that's one project that I just wanted to touch base on. The other thing is, though, I know I've been having some contact about Masworks grant. I did have a conversation yesterday with Mike All from Comprehensive Environmental. He was asking two weeks or three weeks ago about getting some information on the zoning and property owners in that Route 5 corridor to update exactly the direction that we wanna apply for, seeing that the whole project will not be funded by Masworks with our discussion with Ms. McGuire about, you know, how far, how much can we push Masworks to supply some funding. So he did work with Jenny in the assessor's office, and he's very satisfied with the results. So he is putting together that as we speak, as far as who owns what property and what the zoning issues are there that are already in place. And the other piece of that is that he's looking for some support from local businesses in that corridor if, in fact, they do plan on developing more that will help with the infrastructure grant. So he had mentioned that, you know, some of us had some discussions with some people in that corridor that maybe we can get a letter of support. I know that I have gotten, you know, at least one, but, you know, the more the merrier for, just to put into the grant application. It doesn't have to be a firm outbuild. It just has to be, you know, that, you know, if you build the infrastructure, we would, you know, consider an expansion. So that was part of it. He'll be in town Friday. If, and if you wanna talk to him, he's coming in Friday with some other work, but he's gonna definitely talk on the Masworks. Once he gets all his information together, he's gonna set up a meeting with Victoria McGuire from Masworks to lead us in the right direction and see where, if we strayed or if we didn't stray off of the beaten path, I guess. You know, now we have a better position that we've invent, we invested 2.5 million into a project, so, you know. And then with the outbuild coming into Northampton that we did with the public-private funding, you know, we surely should be right there as long as we limit the costs to an acceptable amount.
All right. Okay, how about the, what else you have?
I think they're gonna bring that up. They're gonna bring this up separately, the town garage.
I don't have anything on the agenda.
Okay. What, what about this, essentially a request for abatement from fire department?
Oh, I was gonna, I was going to-
Oh, oh.
That's Paul's, right? If that comes from Paul, that's going to be submitted to the insurance company.
All right, that'll be Paul's.
That was for the water?
Yeah, yeah. I talked to the insurance company a while back, but they told me that they would not cover it, because they, which came as no surprise to me.
We should probably take a look at and take it out of that, the article that we put to take that building down. There should, I think there's money left in that, isn't there?
I don't know if there's any money left.
A few hundred dollars left in there.
We can surely look at what it is.
Take a look at it.
We can take a look at it.
Well, in, in all events, we should abate it.
Right.
And then from fire department.
Right.
I, I covered the funds that we normally pay, which is $45.
Yeah.
Right.
It's, it's the rest of it that, now, that, that's, we normally pay $45 each time.
Right. But, but you got a bill of $320.
Right.
But what we wanna do is abate that, so.
Right, but if there's room in the article there, we should take it from the article and put it into the, into the fund.
Yeah, you can put it back into the water, but at least he's off the hook.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So go ahead and make your motion.
Yeah, I'd, I'd move we abate all but $45 from the fire department and water bill.
I'll second that one. Okay, motion made. Seconded and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up the town garage project. I'm just gonna turn this over to Mr. Lesko, and maybe he, he was involved with the different departments, so. I do have the printouts.
I met with Mark Scholat and, pass those right down. And there's an option. There's option A and B. And the way, the way it's set for bidding here is option A would be the ideal, okay?
Okay, which, okay, okay, got it.
Option A is right on the first page. Those people can't see it at home, but this is in regards to the town garage out back where the ambulance is housed, and we're looking to put the police department, fire department in that one area. The, the offices, they changed just a very little bit, moving a closet and straightening out some walls and so on. But on the first, option A, we looked at putting the bathroom outside to see if we could actually save money in costs where we wouldn't have to chop up the floors and so on and so forth, along with the connecting, between the two buildings. That's an eight-foot connector. And so that would be your, your first bid. And then your second bid would come in as option B, which would be taking the bathroom, putting it inside, losing a little bit of office space and space. And, and then a connector could be on this option where you would get a price on connecting the two buildings together with a breezeway or, or a little walkway. And also, there was a, a drop box for evidence and also a two-way mirror in, in the police department. That would be options here, where you could get, would ask for a price specifically for those. The first one would include everything. The second one, we'd ask for options, okay, on what the price would be. And when you put it out for bid, that, Mark said that would be the easiest way to do that. So as you can see, there's really nothing much-
Help me back up. In option A, we're putting in the ramp, including the ramp, including the exterior bath.
Right.
We've reduced the ambulance size. There's storage. We've eliminated, I believe.
The meeting room would stay the same.
No, the meeting room was smaller. The dimensions, I don't have the dimensions right here, but I know they're about two or three feet smaller.
This is this, this is this. I, I have the old print, so I'm gonna get it. No, this is a new print.
And then we're, we're making also some changes to, to police, and I'm not sure what those were, and Tom wasn't sure what those were.
On the police department, they did away with one computer desk area, made the counter higher, put a, a, a window, bulletproof window in the entrance way when people walk into the thing. And they have, in that same room, they have a bench for, they can take all the information when they arrest somebody and so on, okay? So that was a change in their department. The lockers were changed around a little bit, and the evidence room was slid over a little bit. And I went through this with Tom and, and everybody downstairs, and everybody was agreeable to it. What they asked for was a drop box for the evidence room and also a one-way mirror where you could see into the office. So if they did interrogate, they could actually take in, in video and see what's going on in there.
So Tom is okay with the change?
Tom is okay with this, yes.
And I did meet with Tom yesterday, and he is fine with everything.
Okay, you got an email, I see, from Greg about, what was his issues?
Losing the storage area.
Which would be raised here behind the ambulance, I'm assuming?
Yeah.
What was that again?
Losing stor- his storage area.
The storage area would be, yeah, Greg, theirs would cut down a little bit.
They expanded the fire department office to include, well, they expanded the fire department office and then made up with it, like, cutting out some of the storage area that the ambulance had in their area and using it for-
The tables and the chairs and whatever.
Storage, meeting room items. But he had not seen this.
The, the fire department office would include the emergency man, manager, the-
Yeah, that's one desk. We understand.
And the ambulance was fine, but there reduced storage. They, they felt they didn't, they wouldn't need that whole area, and that's why we moved, you know, that storage for the tables and chairs. So if we do a CPR class, we, we got places for the chairs and the benches and the tables.
So what was he talking about then?
Yeah, he was concerned about continuing to lose storage area.
Not just this area, right? Yeah, no. Well, not this area, this area, here.
Yeah.
All right. Just for the townspeople, we all in the fire department, I hope can back me on this, but we did all meet way back in February, back when there was, the shell of the building was up. We went through everything. We discussed it. Then we had, I'll leave it at, an architect come in and sat down with everybody. We drew up a preliminary plan, made a few changes on that plan, sent that back. Plan came back. Here, we're getting ready for a town meeting. We sent out a, or sent the thing out to a cost estimator. He came back with a price. That's where we came up with a price. After town meeting, there was a few changes, so this is what we're going over. But I did inform Mr. Lesko, along with Chief Beldon, that, remember, we only have the $245,000 to spend, and that's what we're gonna spend no matter what, unless we break it down where the police department, we, we fit them first, and then if it is a big cost overrun, we wait on this building until next year and see where we come up with extra funding. But that's all I can say for this right now.
Can I, what's, what's the requirement for the ramp? I mean, that's-
What's the what?
Requirement for the ramp.
Mark, you mean going from one building to the other?
Yes.
Okay, Mark put the ramp in. That's why he had to move the door.
I only ask that because no matter how you enter, you're essentially gonna enter the meeting area anyway.
No, you're entering into a vestibule area.
I know, okay. But you're still, when you walk into where anybody is, you're walking into the meeting area.
No, there's a door. There should be a door.
There is a door, right here. This door.
Yes.
The meeting room is in here. This serves as a vestibule now. So you walk in here, and then you can either go into the meeting room or go to the right and go into the new, the fire, or the old fire station, or you can go into the bathrooms. That's the way it works. And the ramp is just right, these circles here, he needed that, that circle to make sure that that distance was there. And it ramps up from this building to that building. And this floor, he said that he figured a wooden floor in there. That floor is raised up something like three inches, and so that would help in the ramp situation, you know, but it'd be an all-wood floor.
And what if, you're not putting wood in here?
Yeah, he said the whole thing is all wood and insulated underneath.
Why would we wanna put wood in the, in the bathrooms?
It'd be just like a regular floor in your house. That's what he figured, to insulate underneath. And that's, that's the way he designed it on the original one. No, I didn't have it.
I mean, you're gonna be washing that floor, I hope.
Well, it's not a wood, it's, it's plywood or joist.
Say plywood.
And then they, they had linoleum on top of it or-
All right, when you say it's wood floor, I thought you meant the hardwood floor.
No, 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 not a hardwood floor.
Okay, so in other words, we can put-
Linoleum or tile.
Tile.
Whatever you're gonna have, yeah, absolutely. But it's, it's more so for insulating underneath the floor.
So in option B, we're still going ahead with the ramp?
No, that would be an option.
That would be an option.
The option would be, they would give us a separate price on the ramp, and then they would give us a separate price on the two-way mirror or the one-way mirror and the drop box, 'cause those were expensive items. And Tom said he could do away with that for the time being.
I mean, we could always do that.
If we do away with the ramp, just say if we went with option B and the ramp was an alternative and it was too much money to build that,
Could be put on later.
What are you gonna do here in front to get access to the building?
It would stay just the same way. The door would come in right here, and that would be, could be an option down the road if they wanna put it on.
But don't you have to raise it because of the floor?
It will be raised in that area, um, outside, yes. A blacktop will come into that door. That door will be raised. Right now, there's a window where that entrance door is.
Right, and there's a concrete apron there, correct?
Right, exactly. Or you use a blacktop apron.
Well, you'd have to raise the door.
Yeah. That's what he said.
Well, that's what I'm saying. If you're gonna go up four inches, you gotta, you have to have a transition for handicap accessible to go into that four inches up.
You'd have to go out about eight feet into the parking lot where it goes up to the fire station, and you'd blend it in in that corner, yeah. He said that wouldn't, that wouldn't be a problem.
Let's move on this, because I've been asking for this for a month. Oh, I know, but I'm, I'm saying, I, I wish, I wish this was all, well, like I say, there's, there's always room for a little movement here and there, but now we're gonna be expanding out, and this should've been brought up, so we could've gotten a better estimate to bring, to bring to town floor, if you understand what I'm saying, you know? It should've been brought up to us way before, whether it came screaming at me or Phil or what, and if you didn't get anything from him, come screaming at me, you know. But, and then I, I, I actually called you, oh, you know, called you to, to tell you if you want a door moved, something like that. Now's the time to do it, but be informed. That's, that's all we got to spend, so.
Well, yeah, and you don't think this too, if you don't, this is not just strictly for the fire department.
You can come up here, though. Come up, come up, come up here. Come up here. He can't hear you, or, if you wanna come up.
I, I just wanted to say that this is not just strictly for the fire department. It's for all, all emergency services, and it's gonna be used as an emergency operations center if needed. Hopefully, we never have to use it as an emergency operations center. So we're not just looking for, for the fire department per se. We're looking for it for all emergency services.
I understand that. I understand it, but like I say, I wish, I mean, we, we, we started discussing this back in February. We pretty much came up with the idea of putting everything over there. When we saw the, the old school get torn down, we knew you lost, you lost your, your meeting area. So I said, geez, you know, maybe it wouldn't be a bad idea. Talked with Jeff about it. We decided, hey, we'll take a walk over there. We decided, hey, we'll take a walk over there, which I think all of you were there. It was, I believe it was in February, I'm positive it was in February. But the floor wasn't poured or anything, and we took a walk through. We just kinda gave a rough idea of what we wanted, and, well, like I told people afterwards, so. I mean, I don't have a problem with the changes, but I only wish they came to us way before, so.
The other thing, the other thing-
Wait a minute, I'm not done speaking.
Go ahead.
All right. I wish, if we came, if it came to us with this, we could have added on this bathroom outside. We could have gone and asked for it at town meeting. And if it got shot down at town meeting, well, oh, well. But it's easier to ask with all the information than getting the information after the fact. And I don't think we can, I wouldn't hold it a special town meeting just to ask for more money. You know, so.
But you don't know yet to ask for some more money yet, so.
Well, I'm just saying, you're right. You know, hopefully, we won't. Hopefully, the cost estimator went a little bit over on the original plan, but I, you know, I guess we're gonna just wait and see.
Are you through, Mr. Chen?
Yes, I am through, now go ahead, but hurry up.
I did talk to Mark July, and he said that this is not uncommon.
Oh, I know.
He said, when you have your preliminary design at your first group, sometimes he goes through seven of those changes, looking to tweak here, to tweak there, to make it fit, make sure everybody's in there. So the first drawing is just a preliminary drawing to get it on paper, to see what we can do, and to see what happens. I know when I came back from vacation, I looked in the emergency management desk, was out in the middle of the meeting room here, or on the side of the meeting room. They needed it, she needed it in their own office, okay? So that was, that was one of the changes here. So anyway, when things like that happen, then Mark said, you know, he said that's not an uncommon thing. And I know it, in the building business, that's, I know just in a plain house. I mean, when you're dealing with spouses and stuff, there can be multiple, multiple changes, okay? And this is no different.
No, I just, I won't say anymore. Let's move on. Okay, I, just for two minutes. Go ahead, why don't you come up here, though, so you can, you have to come up here because the camera can't hear the-
I just wanna interject that the, there should have been a building committee for this project. Most of our projects we do in town, we have a building committee. They work with architects, engineers, and it takes a long process, like the elementary school, which is not even close to the size of this. But that took years to build. They didn't put it together in three or four months. Yes, we're only talking a few thousand, a hundred thousand dollars here, but I think, you know, a building committee could have worked together better than the ideas went to the architect and then presented to the board. I, as a fireman, have been on for 20 years. I did a search committee for a public safety complex 20 years ago, and that was shot down. I don't see us moving out of this place anytime soon, so it's something for, not just for me, or, which Bill's gonna be leaving soon, but for the future firefighters, EMS people, emergency management, police, they're gonna be there for a while. There's this home. And you know how the way budgets are going, we're not getting anything any sooner. So I just thought we should have worked better as a team, everyone. I mean, I thought there was not a lot of communication there. I really wanna thank Ed Lesko for listening, you know, he was a great listener.
Okay, but like I said, if it came to us before, I would have listened.
I walked in to an impromptu meeting, 'cause I saw Bill at the station. That was at February meeting, I think. He went on an ambulance call, he said, can you stand by? I didn't know anything about the meeting. So whatever I was discussing with whomever was there was kinda like just out of my head. There was no notes, there was no talking, you know, previously.
I know we invited everybody to it, so, I mean, I didn't, we didn't personally go, we told Bill, Bill should have cut in a whole few of you, and so on and so forth.
But you all agree that we're gonna be here for a while, right?
Absolutely.
For a long while. So it doesn't have to be the Taj Mahal, but it has to make us feel good. We put a lot of time in, in a lot of our personal time. And that connector is one big thing, 'cause right now, we're gonna have to be going out, out one door into another door. And we basically have three different areas. The fire station, it'd be the new complex area, and then we have a garage bay down further, where we're gonna be housing vehicles and next to the police station. So to have a connector between those two would be excellent, Michael.
Well, like I say, some of this stuff can be added afterwards. Let's get the initial done, so you can get over there and be comfortable. This, you can add down the road, you know, so, right? Cindy? Sorry.
Speaking of a meeting, I wasn't invited to that meeting, the initial walk-around. Bill told me the day before, he said, oh, if you wanted to come, it was going on. And I do remember the floors being poured, and emergency management was never mentioned. It was said it was for ambulance fire, and as we left, I did say, oh, emergency manager will be in there, and I was told, yeah, we'll get you in there someplace, and that's fine.
Emergency management is part of the fire. Emergency management is part of the fire. Let's not forget that.
Right, but there was no spot for it, there was no space for it, and I brought that up, he said, oh, we'll fit you in, you know. So I didn't think it was really planned out, and it just seems even now, well, you can add that later. We spent $30,000 at a whack at town meeting, putting together master plans over and over, and there seems to be no real plan here. Oh, there's a building, we're gonna put you in there, and if you look at it, you've got police in an area further south, and you've got fire, ambulance, emergency, all in, I think, probably about the same area. So you're fitting, you know, a police department, we have maybe one person on it at a time, you know, in a larger area than you have, if you're fitting three departments, more or less, in one. And as a taxpayer, you know, do I want a public safety, for so, public safety building? No. A huge one? No, not really. Something, I think, a little bit more functional than what seems to be going in there, I'm willing to pay for. Not millions of dollars, you know, millions and millions of dollars. But I just hate to see anyone going blindly and say, well, let's do this. It just seems like everything's patchwork all the time. We've met with Ed a number of times, he was nice enough to come out to the building there, and each time, it was, no, you have to stay in these constraints. And I don't know if you've seen the bathroom in there, but I won't even go in the room, never mind use the room in there. It's really bad, and we were told, no, that's staying there.
If you think that one's bad, go up to town garage and look at that one.
Well, I don't work there, so I won't be cleaning that, you know, I'm gonna clean up after myself and before if I need to use it. But that's got nothing to do with this, really. And my other concern as a taxpayer was if, did you say that there was gonna be a booking area in the police department?
There's no, it's just one where you take the information down, and he did, Tom's office could be used for an interrogation room if they wanted it.
Well, I'm just concerned, you know, again, as a taxpayer, about the booking area, because usually, protocol usually is that if you're booking someone, you always have to have a second party present. Number one, as a witness, and as a safety thing, so every time someone's arrested, does that mean you're gonna have to call extra personnel?
I think they still bring them up to the state police barracks, I think.
So they want a booking area here, too, is that what I'm saying?
I think it's just basically more, it's not interrogation.
The safety concern is one-on-one, with nobody, if something ever happened, nobody would ever know.
Right.
But that's, that's Tom's department, that's, he knows what the protocol is there, should know.
Right, but as a taxpayer, you're gonna have to call an extra personnel each time something happens.
You'd have to ask, we can ask Tom that.
All right, well, are you happy with Plan A, Plan B?
Plan A.
I haven't seen them.
Well, I'm just gonna say, if, we're gonna, we're gonna bid out Plan A, Plan B.
It has to be done that way.
Was it $245,000 by square footage, though? That was my question, is that based on square footage? Is that, who arrived at the $245 figure?
We had a cost estimator.
We had a cost estimator coming in, and he went through the whole thing and what-
By square footage?
I don't believe we were by the project.
By the, yeah.
Specific item by item.
But wasn't that before much?
That was bef-, right.
Correct.
Correct.
We won't know until the bids go out here. And that was the other thing, that we, I talked to Phil, and this is something that, because of the petitions, we can bid it in-house. We don't need a general contractor to do this. We can put the plumbing out, we can put the electrical out, we can put the construction out. And that way, we keep it right in-house.
Because we did do some research, we traveled to the newer building and hold on, get information on the one in Paxton, et cetera, but there was never a meeting or a building committee or anything to bring that information to, and have people that work in that field have some input. You know, an architect has never, or, you know, a contractor, general contractor, usually has never had any experience or knows what's needed daily, say, by an ambulance or a fire department, et cetera. And it just, that's why-
Basically, went to everybody to see what their needs were. That's why, and again, I know we were talking about a committee.
But then you didn't have it included in there when we went over there.
But then you have people on a committee that doesn't, don't have a clue either. Okay, so, I mean, this is why I felt that we'd go right to the chiefs. They gave us their input, the police chief really didn't have an issue at all, other than what, a window and just one little wall. But other than that, so, I mean, he worked out fine. He talked to his officers, they were happy with it, and that was it, so. But anyways, we're gonna move on it. Plan A, my suggestion is to send out a bid on Plan A and Plan B, and whatever comes back. If Plan A is within, we go with Plan A.
That'll determine which way we're going.
And Plan B, so, that's my suggestion.
I'll second, we'll take that as a motion, and I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay.
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thanks, Bill. Thanks, Cindy.
All right. Is that it?
I'm in.
That's it?
Are you good now?
I'm good now. I just want to make a comment about some comments that were made. I just want everybody to know that this wasn't a plan that was handed to the different departments, saying, live with it. This was meeting after meeting with the architect, with the individuals involved about the floor plan. For someone to say that, they weren't notified, just totally wrong, and it's-
Well, some may not have been notified.
Well, maybe some, maybe not. I don't know who, because the meetings that I attended with the architect, they all were there, looking at the plans and accepted the plans, and the cost estimate went out to the cost estimator with that plan to town meeting. So I just wanna make sure that I'm not thrown under the bus here, because I feel like I did my job.
You're not thrown under the bus, Phil, not at all, not at all.
Okay, Phil, thank you.
As you can see, the plan is very close to what was original, okay? I mean, really, it's, there's just a couple of options here.
All right, let's move.
Go ahead.
You're all set?
I'm all set.
Yes, thank you.
You ready for me, Mr. Chen?
Hurry. It's hot in here.
Yeah, yeah, it is. I've just got a couple of items. On our window replacement project, I was really hoping that I would have a contract for you to sign today. But I don't have it yet. As you recall, we awarded the bid to Wilcox Builders of South Deerfield. Phil and I have been having a rather difficult time getting ahold of them, which, according to the building inspector, is typical. But I did draft a contract and sent it to them a couple of weeks ago. I haven't gotten it back. In the meantime, Phil has talked to Matt Wilcox, who said he has reviewed the contract and actually told Phil that, you know, who's gonna sign it and send it back. I still haven't gotten it back yet, but, so we're, and I believe that the windows have been ordered, Phil?
I'm hoping. You know, I went down to the Marvin representative at R.K. Miles, where Wilcox is dealing with, and told him to order the windows, because it's a four- to five-week period, so.
Yep.
Yeah, and we're, in the contract, the contract stipulates that they have to be, the project completed by September 30th. And we don't want them to be working out windows in the middle of winter.
Correct.
So.
You're gonna have to apply for an extension if it goes further than that.
Yeah, yeah, so that's where we're at with that. The only other thing that's, that you have to deal with here is a three-day liquor license, that's in your packet.
It's only, basically, it's a one day, but it's three days.
But that's, yeah, how they're set up.
So should approve three-day liquor license for the Holy Name of Jesus Church, South Deerfield, for use of the Lions Club Pavilion, covering the period 19th of August. Excuse me, excuse me, what are the dates, 18, 19?
Date of the function is 8/19, 12, so August 19th.
It says 21 here.
It says 21.
Had me confused.
Oh.
The date of the function is 8/19.
I know this guy, I'm gonna get-
Three days. I'll second that motion.
Okay, motion made, seconded, all in favor?
Aye. Are we taking care of this other thing about notifying licensees?
Yep, that's, I'm just gonna bring that up. That little, just find out what we have, or what, if any changes were made this year from the ABCC there.
Oh, okay.
And if we, if there are changes, we can give each license holder a copy of the changes, just so we keep them happy and-
Get it to them in advance, right?
What they're asking is ABCC advisory and or notices are forwarded kindly to all Hatfield liquor licensees, so.
Okay. I haven't seen that. All right, one other thing, are you all set?
I'm all set.
Okay. We did sign it, or we sat down with the chief of the police department at our last meeting. We do have a contract, so if somebody would like to make a motion on the-
I move that we increase his salary to the same as the fire chief's, at $29 per hour.
Didn't we cover, didn't we cover pay already?
Not that one. That one, no, that's right.
We did it during executive session?
We did it.
That's right.
Okay, we couldn't vote the dollar figure, we had to wait until an open meeting.
We need to vote in an open session.
Okay, well-
And this contract is on contingent of him-
Legislation.
Signing-
Yeah.
Legislation signing, the OK to continue, because he's at retirement age. So at town meeting, we voted to extend his time, and it's still down in Boston someplace.
Well, but it doesn't say that.
No.
I'm just, I'll second the motion on the pay.
It's only to get his pay straightened out, that's what it is right now.
I'll second the motion on the pay. However, we don't have the proviso in here, subject to legislative approval of his extension.
It should be in his contract.
I thought, I thought that was all straightened away, but we can look.
It wasn't in the terms.
Okay, a motion's been made, seconded. All in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right.
Got the contract for the valley conservation. What was in your package, along with the television? I don't know if that was for informational purposes?
That's just informational purposes, that's been, that's been signed and-
Well, we also have the employment contracts of Mr. Sadowski and Mr. Beldon here.
That we have to-
We already went through those.
Okay.
Yep, we voted those in last, remember, because we took a break for about an hour or so.
Yeah.
So those are all set.
All right.
Anybody wanna entertain a motion, go in executive session, we have one more contract to-
I changed this, it looks like I inadvertently took that language out, so I will put it back in.
Okay.
All set?
We got one more contract, so we're gonna have to go in executive session.
Oh, we do?
Phil's.
Oh. Motion to approve, excuse me. I moved that the Board of Selectmen adjourn in executive session to conduct collective, conduct contract negotiations with non-union personnel, and we will not be returning to open session.
Second.
All in favor?
Lesko, aye.
Adamski, aye.
Boil, aye.
Okay, we will not be returning. Our next meeting, I believe, will be in two weeks from today. Don't ask me what the exact date is, but- No, this is the 24th, so, whatever. Two weeks from today. Okay, thank you very much.
Motion to adjourn.